Uh, oh, let's wait for Nancy.
I'm playing Wiltshire.
I need to get back to Wiltshire. All right. Another chair, shift the chairs. All right, good evening, everybody. Just give us one more minute. We're gonna get organized and we'll get things started. Yep. Yeah, we can admit her after we call roll, right? Yeah, okay. So, yeah, it is August 5th. It's 6:30. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Um, let's go ahead and start with the roll call.
Okay. Mr. Hagerty?
Here.
Ms. Austin?
Here.
Mr. Montiel?
Here.
Mr. Ruddle?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Adams is absent tonight. Ms. Hubka?
Present.
Mr. Renson?
Here.
Mr. Kaplan?
Here.
Ms. Cicero is not here yet. And then Chair Martinez?
Present.
The quorum is present. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. First order of business is approval of minutes from the July 22nd meeting. I hope everybody got a chance to review. Are there any comments, additions, corrections? No? All right. Well, then can I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Can we have a vote?
Yep. Mr. Hagerty?
Yes.
Ms. Austin?
Abstain.
Uh, Mr. Montiel?
Yes.
Mr. Ruddle?
Yes.
Ms. Hubka?
Yes.
Mr. Renson?
Abstain.
Mr. Kaplan?
Yes.
And Chair Martinez?
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right, now we have next on the agenda, public forum. This is for anybody to speak to the commission about something that is not on the agenda. It's not an opportunity for discussion, but it's an opportunity for public comment. Anybody here like to participate in a public forum? Seeing none. Anybody online? All right, then let's move on to public hearing of case ZON 2024-005 Chick-fil-A Planned Unit Development Amendment. I broke.
Could I have a motion to open the public hearing, please?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. I need a motion to open.
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll second.
Oops, sorry. Uh, Mr. Hagerty?
Yes.
Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Montiel?
Yes.
Mr. Ruddle?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Hubka?
Yes.
Mr. Renson?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplan?
Yes.
And Chair Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. Now, if I could have everyone either online or in the audience that will be speaking tonight, or possibly could be speaking, raise your right hand. Please stand, raise your right hand. What happened to my left? And I will swear you all in, if I can find it somewhere. Hold on. Well, we're just gonna go by this. Do you swear affirm, under the penalties of perjury, that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the planning and zoning commission?
I do.
Thank you. So when you come up to speak, just state your name and who you're with and then add. All right, Mr. Bell.
Good evening, Chair Martinez and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Brooke Bell. I'm a senior planner with the Community Development Department. And tonight, we're here to discuss case number ZON 2024-005. It's a application for a PUD amendment for the Chick-fil-A PUD at 3085 South Broadway. So I'm just gonna go through our PowerPoint here and then we can open it up to any questions at the end of that. Okay, so in terms of the site, the Chick-fil-A, existing Chick-fil-A is located at 3085 South Broadway. The site is approximately 1.18 acres. The current zoning is Chick-fil-A Planned Unit Development, which was approved in 2013. I believe it was recorded in 2014. And their request tonight is for a PUD amendment for construction of two canopies over the drive-through and additional paving along Broadway for a vehicle bypass lane near the drive-through window. You can see the location of the site. It's at the northwest corner of Dartmouth and Broadway, shown there in the yellow. And then the map in the upper right just kind of shows some of the zoning around it, which we'll get a better look at that on the next slide. So in terms of surrounding land uses, and so the zone districts, you can see the Chick-fil-A site is in blue, which stands for a PUD. And then to the north is MUB2, which is a general arterial business district. And then to the west is MUR3B, which is a mixed-use, higher-density residential. And then beyond that, to the east and west is R2B, which is also an attached, single-family, as well as attached townhome-type development. And then the lighter color is R1C. In particular, some of the land uses nearby, in the photograph, number one is the Frame Day Art Store on Broadway, which is kind of a Inglewood fixture. And then number two is just a shot of some of the single-family and attached residential. Number three, which is on the other side of Dartmouth, south of Dartmouth, is 7-Eleven, a convenience store. Number four is the hamburger stand, drive-through restaurant. Number five is Walgreens, which is currently, or former Walgreens, which is currently vacant. And then number six is the Wright Motel. So various surrounding land uses. So in terms of the history of the site, a long time ago, the site was the Inglewood Press Building, which was kind of a retail office supply store. And then it switched into indoor entertainment and recreational use, which I believe was fantastic fun. And then there were also, on the same site, there were a couple of single-family detached houses between the alley and a coma. So you see the photograph at the lower left, 2006, that's what it looked like. And then by 2015, after the PUD was approved, the buildings were scraped. And as part of the PUD, the alley was also vacated and turned into an L that turned it towards the west. And that's what you currently see today, that turning the alley improved the circulation on-site, and that still exists today. In terms of this PUD's history, the, they started out with a development review team meeting on April 2nd of 2024, and followed that up with a neighborhood meeting in September of 2024, and then had another one just a few weeks ago in July of 2025. They needed to have a second meeting. Too much time had passed between, you're not allowed to go beyond six months. So the formal PUD submittal was actually in December of 2024, and there were some review and revisions between that time and now. So tonight, obviously, is the Planning and Zoning Public Hearing. There's a typo there. It's, that should be August 5th, not August 4th. And then we're planning on going to City Council Public Hearing on September 2nd. Excuse me. So, as I mentioned, the PUD amendment is for the construction of two canopies. And I apologize, because I can show you, one canopy is along the east side of the building, between the building and South Broadway, and that kind of covers the inside lane leading up to the pickup window. The other canopy, which actually covers two lanes, is actually in this area, and so I'm sorry that wasn't included in this graphic, but you can see it in your packet, and it's probably gonna be in the applicant's packet as well, or PowerPoint. But the, one of the primary focuses of the PUD is really twofold, and one is the canopies are to protect employees, as well as patrons who are out there in the sun in the drive-through, or the rain, I guess. And then the other is to create a bypass lane to, really, this whole thing is to improve efficiency and circulation, so that as, if you've been to a Chick-fil-A, you know sometimes they come out, they bring you your food, even not at the window sometimes. And so it allows the ability for people, some people to wait until they get to the window, but other people, if they've picked up their food, to bypass the drive-through and exit. There were a couple other changes in the circulation, and I'll let the applicant explain that a little bit more, but it was some of the internal kind of circulation in terms of one-way or two-way. Now, as part of this, because of the bypass lane, because this lane was widened out, the area between, the landscape area between the building, the original drive-through, and Broadway has been narrowed a little bit, and you see these crosses, those are three trees to be removed. And there is an existing screen wall, a low wall, about three and a half feet, that is also gonna be relocated. It won't be completely removed, it'll be relocated, a little bit closer to Broadway. So in lieu of that, landscaping was very important, and that was conveyed to the applicant. And so basically, all the plantings are gonna be replaced along Broadway with a much more dense planting. There'll be one- and five-gallon plants between the wall and sidewalk on Broadway. There'll also be upright junipers spaced at 15 feet on center. And we'll get into this later, but the Community Development Department is also recommending, these three trees that were removed, they're gonna be replaced on the Dartmouth side. And then Community Development is also making a recommendation for a condition that two additional trees be placed along South Broadway in this wider north area and wider south area, such that you would really only have a net loss of one tree. Other than that, there's more quantity and density of plantings along Broadway than there previously was. In terms of compatibility with the comprehensive plan, what Community Development determined was that it meets goal work number one, which is to support local and regional businesses to build and maintain a diverse, compatible base of companies. And as a subset of that, objective work 1-1 is to develop programs and projects to actively retain existing commercial and industrial businesses. Obviously, this is an existing commercial business, and as such, the proposed PUD amendment would expand an existing local commercial business that serves residents, employees, and Inglewood visitors. Number two, goal work number two is to build, attract, and retain a quality workforce, support local and regional businesses to build and maintain a diverse and compatible base of companies. As a subset of that, objective work 2-5 is to work to attract adult education programs to prepare a future workforce and encourage job creation. Chick-fil-A does sponsor a program called Remarkable Future Scholarships, where their team members, where their team members across the United States and Canada are offered the opportunity to apply for college scholarships to pursue higher education. And that's not just to work at Chick-fil-A, that can be for anything. So that's its relation to the comprehensive plan. In terms of the PUD review criteria, EMC Code Section 16-2-5C says that PUD plans shall be reviewed on the following criteria. And I didn't list all the criteria, only the ones that directly apply right now. And that is that the plan provides benefits beyond just the property, and they're not just strictly to facilitate a project. And the Chick-fil-A restaurant has been operating successfully, very successfully, on this property since 2017, and its popularity with the community is evidenced by this request to make it more efficient and to allow for additional employees and customers. The traffic report does state that they don't necessarily know that'll be more customers, but that it'll be a more efficient experience for the customers and a more sort of comfortable situation for patrons and the employees. Number two, that the deviations from the standards result in a development that equally or better meets the purposes, intent, and design objectives of the code. The proposed amendment meets or exceeds the standards of the 2014 Planning Unit Development in terms of additional landscaping beyond what is currently on the site under the existing PUD. And then lastly, number three, the flexibility proposed in the plan is based on one or more of the following criteria. Improved amenities for residents, businesses, or patrons within the project or vicinity of the project. This Chick-fil-A restaurant serves surrounding businesses, restaurants, and patrons, and provides employment opportunities for the community, and it is a destination on Broadway within Inglewood. So with that, the Community Development recommendation is that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward the proposed Chick-fil-A Planned Unit Development Amendment to City Council with the following condition that I mentioned before, and that is to add two two-and-a-half-inch caliper trees to the landscape plan, one each on the north and south sides of the proposed vehicle bypass lane. So with that, are there any questions?
Colin?
Thank you, Mr. Bell, for the presentation. Was the original PUD needed just because they combined the two lots and one of it was residential area originally?
So I think a couple of things were at play. One was the, the zone, the requirements for a drive-through would have required the drive-through to be configured a little bit differently. It would have been more internal to the site. So, yes, it would have been more internal to the site, and then the western portion of the site was not MUB2. The other thing was that turning the alley was gonna need to go to City Council anyways to vacate that alley. So that was, so those were the primary reasons. But to sort of focus in on your question more, drive-throughs are allowed in the MUB2 to this day, and it's a matter of how they're done. So they're not allowed in the MUB1, but they are allowed in the MUB2. So the fact that it was a drive-through was not the sole driver of needing a PUD back in 2013.
Were there any other significant sort of variances from MURB2 in that original PUD?
Not that I'm aware of. Not that I'm aware of.
And I guess if we're talking about additional landscaping requirements, some of the, you know, people on that north end, and maybe even on the west side, you know, if we're losing a couple trees on Broadway, could we potentially add something on that north side? I guess would that be an option to kind of mitigate some of that loss of a tree and provide a little more shading for some of those residents that are still along that dry alley?
And you're talking about on the north side?
Yeah, north or west side, really, there's, looks like there's some space, yeah.
I think it's certainly the commission's prerogative to add any conditions they want. As I mentioned, you know, Community Development is recommending two additional trees along Broadway, and then there's gonna be three trees sort of moved, even though they'll be new, on Dartmouth. But if the commission would like to add that, Community Development would certainly support that, and, you know, one more tree and you're back to even.
Uh, I see. Let's go David first, then Michelle.
Is there a plan to sort of make sure that the density of planting that's added along Broadway survives and has a minimum replacement rate or something? I mean, things happen, plants die.
Sure, things happen, and that's one of the reasons we also wanted, you know, at first, there was discussion of, you know, save what's there. And we knew with rebuilding the wall that it was likely that those would go away, or not do well with a new wall, you know, afoot from them. So, so, yes, code would say, and we would say, that plantings need to be maintained as per the PUD, and if they, if they die, they should be replaced.
Michelle.
Um, I think we're all on sort of the same page. For some reason, we're all talking about trees. Well, I appreciate adding those trees along Broadway. It would actually be my preference that, that they not, on that northern part of the drive-through, be put there because it will block the mural, the Inglewood mural that's on the wall of the building. So it would be my preference to see those trees, yeah, those trees there, yeah, they would block the site of the Inglewood mural. And so my preference would be to add the trees along the west side to mitigate those homes that are along that side. It's just these small things, but just something I thought about.
Thank you. Yeah, certainly, it's the commission's prerogative.
Yeah. The strip of landscaping on the north, like, right next to Frame Day Art, is that out of scope? Is that on this property or no? There's a strip of landscaping and some...
I believe so. I wish I had a better graphic of that, and I think that as the applicant goes through their presentation, they may have a better graphic. This one doesn't go as far north as that northern property line. But you're asking, is there room for landscaping up here?
There already exists some landscaping there. It looks like it was probably added as part of this development, but I'm not sure if it's the responsibility of this property.
Yeah, and I guess where I, I don't know, north, I agree, I don't wanna cover that mural either. I was talking maybe on the western lot, and there's like a little bit of a strip in between on the north, on the north side, that, again, might just help with some blocking of traffic, although it looks like it's cars there right now. I don't know. If those are, it looks like a parking lot on that side, so maybe it's not that big a deal. But I think the west side maybe is even the best place to shade and provide some additional cover there.
I have a question about, you know, widening or for the bypass lane. There's an existing light pole in the sidewalk. Have we confirmed that this will still allow enough space for wheelchair access down the sidewalk on, along Broadway?
I don't think the sidewalk is being, unless I'm missing something, I don't think the sidewalk is being revised at all. So it's a matter of the space between sort of what, where the wall is now in the sidewalk.
It's sort of one of these unfortunate circumstances where the light pole sits in the sidewalk. And so a lot of times you see a bump out, you know, to kind of allow space around it. I just wanna ensure that we're maintaining accessibility along the sidewalk on Broadway.
It looks like there's no bump out in the...
Yeah, there is an ALTA survey that's in the packet, and I should have brought my reading glasses, but...
I mean, I would just contend that we would want a condition applied that maintains accessibility.
That makes sense. Absolutely.
I've got another thing. This is along the Dartmouth, there's, you know, designated bike lane there, but I don't think there's any sort of bike rack or bike facilities on this property. Is that, do any exist there, place for folks to put their...
I don't have the answer to that.
We'll ask the applicant.
Yeah.
Colin?
You know, there's the juniper trees going in, are they going in between the new wall and the existing sidewalk? And is there, I mean, if we're taking out trees, how do we have room to put?
So they're upright junipers, they're like skyrocket junipers that are very, very narrow.
Okay.
So, so, yes. Yeah. And it'll be 15 feet on center, so they're just gonna create kind of a, not a continuous barrier by any means, but they'll, it'll be kind of a perceived barrier by having something a little bit taller than just the five-gallon shrubs.
Is there, you know, is there irrigation for these strips along Broadway and Dartmouth, or are they just kind of established in the...
That's required.
Okay.
Last question. Any, is there a setback issue with the wall where they are proposing to be placed? Does that have to have a setback, or is that not really considered? It's not obviously a part of the building itself, so does that not count in the setback?
So, excuse me, in the, in these B-zone districts, the MUB1 and B2, typically zoning is trying to push the buildings towards the street. In terms of our just general wall and fence regulations, typically, a fence or wall needs to be a minimum of one foot from the back of a sidewalk, which this is. And if it's over the right-of-way line or property line, it would need an encroachment agreement, which in this case it's not. It's right at the property line.
Are there questions from commissioners for staff? Thank you, Brooke.
Thank you.
All right, I guess now we hear from the applicant, and then public? Okay.
Thank you, commissioners. Parker Bodley with Barkhausen Consulting Engineers, representing Chick-fil-A in this case. Address 18215 72nd Avenue South in Kent, Washington. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for hearing this, and I would like to thank city staff as well. They've been very responsive and very helpful. So I'll start just by answering some of the basic questions you had, and then we can get into a little more detail. In our first neighborhood meeting that we had, we had one neighbor, neighboring business attendant that had concerns about blocking the mural, as you have concerns with as well. The landscaping along that mural is... with as well. The landscaping along that mural is, is owned by Chick-fil-A and maintained by Chick-fil-A. There's some shrubs there and some pine that partially obstruct that mural. So, certainly, any additional plantings would further obstruct that. And we, we're not opposed. We reviewed the staff report and considered adding those two trees that was recommended. And we can comply with that. We can add those trees, but again, it would further impact that mural certainly. And there are trees, I'll, I'll pull up the landscape plan here for you now. We'll just take a look at that first. So, here's the, the landscape plan. You can see the three trees that we're proposing on West Dartmouth on the south side. Those are to be replacing the three that are being removed on South Broadway. There's an existing tree that will remain here. And there's trees along the building frontage there. The plantings we had proposed, a tree up here that may impacted the visibility of that mural. We are also proposing another one down here, which we've, have room for and can certainly make that, make that work. In total, with those three trees there being added, replacing those three, there wouldn't be a, a net loss of trees at all on site. The landscaping proposed along the frontage here is a greater density than what's out there now currently. It's a mixture of native plants that are, can be viewed in various seasons. So, there wouldn't be necessarily a, a time where they're all dried up or, you know. So, we'd have a mix of, of plantings there. On the west side, there's trees as well. There's also a screen wall along this frontage that, you know, may conflict any further plantings on that side. But the screen wall there does protect the, the residents from the, the, the business operating. The, there's bike racks currently at the northwest corner here. Spaces for three bicycles there. There was a question about the sidewalk. There's a light pole in the sidewalk here. We're not changing the sidewalk along either frontage. No, no changes to the sidewalk are being proposed. So, the ADA compatibility would remain as it is today. Going back, I think Brooke covered it all pretty well. Again, this was approved in 2013 as a P U D. You can see the original plans there. It started construction in 2016, finished in 2017. This is when it was first opened in 2017, as it is. And you can see the plantings are, are grown. This is, this year. Otherwise, operations, the overall site has remained unchanged since it opened. P U D, Brooke covered this pretty well. It's established a specific zoning for the, the business. It gives us a little more flexibility in our design. And as we, Chick-fil-A continues to grow and, and gain clients, it demands further changes and so that we can operate at a more efficient level. The, there's a minor amendment process to the P U D that's for, more for minor changes as staff had directed. This is, the changes proposed were determined to be a major amendment, which requires us to come before you and, and city council. So, looking at the proposed changes, there's a side-by-side. You can see the bypass lane is being proposed here, as well as some, some widening. And this is a, a point out of exactly what's changing here on site. So, the, the bypass lane, the screen wall is being adjusted to accommodate that bypass lane, but it will remain as it is today. It was a brick screen wall, same height. There was a O M D canopy, meal delivery canopy here over the pickup window. It allows staff to come out and deliver meals to both lanes. And one thing that Chick-fil-A sees across all their locations is that by having this second pickup lane, it exponentially increases the, the process of getting people through because those attendants can serve people from both sides. And there's a space in between those for them to stand safely. The canopy here, again, this is for weather protection for the attendants there. There is heaters and fans for either season as well. Chick-fil-A is known for their attendance, going out to the vehicles and, and taking those orders in person. There's a widening here to increase the, the capacity for vehicles, to reduce the, the conflict points of those vehicles, utilizing both lanes. And then, a one-way flow. Previously, that was a two-way traffic. This will be changing it to a one-way, again, to reduce the conflict points on site. Landscaping, we, we covered a bit here. Again, overall, there's a greater density of plantings than what is out there currently. And here's a street view of it. You can see the wall that will be adjusted, but it'll be the same, same look. The canopy, as you can see from the top, is the drawing of that. It'll just be along the frontage. There will be, we'll have to make some adjustments for the, the awnings, but again, there will be fans and heaters for that. Otherwise, the, the building will remain the same as it is. Brooke had covered the, the criteria quite well, and we have no oppositions to that. And we agree with everything that staff has concluded. Overall, we, we believe that this will be a more efficient use of the, the property and, and provide a better service to, to those that come and visit. Overall, improvement in traffic flow through the site. We're planning to utilize both lanes. It'll substantially decrease the, the wait times, reduce stacking, and then providing canopies for attendant safety and, and good customer service. And I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Michelle.
Is a similar project being done to the Chick-fil-A up on Colorado Boulevard in Yale? Is that what's going on up there? Do you know?
Commissioner, that's a project that we are actually working on as well, and that's under construction currently. So, we are adding canopies in that location as well. It's a similar, similar scope, yeah.
Okay. So, are they, are they shut now during that? And is this going to shut during? I don't think it's going to have to shut for this project.
This will remain open. Everything is exterior to the building and, construction can, sorry, can resume while the business is operating.
Okay. And now that I know that you actually have the landscaping just below the mural, could you make it so it's not, some of your shrubs are starting to get into the mural? But anyway, this, this has nothing to do with this project, but just, and as an aside, it's, your plants are growing up a little too tall for that mural. That's all I'm saying.
I understand your concern. And certainly, everybody is aware of the, the mural, and we want to be good, good stewards here and, and make that visible to everyone.
Well, it just, it, it just really helps Inglewood stand out. And that, of course, is something that we all have civic pride in, want to, want to maintain that as much as possible. So, thanks so much.
Uh, there's a small public art sort of sculpture there. Obviously, this won't affect that. Any opportunity to highlight, feature, expand, anything like that around? I mean, again, this is sort of the placemaking, you know, that we're looking to do for the city and to protect for the city. Any consideration of that?
Chairman, you're talking about this?
Yep.
And the, the right-of-way?
Mm-hmm.
We're not proposing anything in the public right-of-way. And it's outside of our scope. And we can certainly do what we can landscaping-wise on site, but nothing would be proposed in the, in the right-of-way.
Do we know, was that part of the original P U D or included, or is that something subsequent?
No, I believe that was part of the former Business Improvement District.
Sure.
A number of years ago. I believe there's multiple sort of versions of, of those kind of pseudo flowers. But that was a former Business Improvement District.
Yeah.
There is currently, that Business Improvement District is, is no longer, but there is a, you know, Downtown Development Authority that looks at those kinds of things.
Actually, another question for you, Brooke. I know in the packet, the 224-page packet, a lot of the original P U D, right? A lot of traffic study information in there. But the talk about extending the turn lanes, that was all handled part of the original P U D?
Yes, yes. So, so, most of those, that lengthy report is from the original P U D, which was referenced in the traffic letter that is current now, that talks about this project in particular.
Okay. So, so, nothing as part of this amendment outside of, of the, this boundary of the P U D? There's nothing?
That's my understanding, that it's truly internal to this P U D.
Great. One more question for you, Brooke. The, the canopies, which I, it's great, that provide a lot of amenity for both workers and for, for customers. Are there things in the M U B two zone district that governs anything about height, about setbacks, about anything like that, that?
There, there are, but, but, but these would not violate it.
Okay, that's my question.
As I, as I, you know, the height is much higher in the M U B two than this, than this building is today. And, and then in terms of setbacks, as I mentioned, in those zone districts, the, the code is typically trying to push things closer to the street.
Sure.
So, no, I, I, there's no violation of any of those.
Okay, thank you. Colin?
I want to note that the landscaping on this site has actually always been something I thought was, you know, quite well put together. Like I said, native landscaping, which is important, obviously, in our community for drought-tolerant, you know, features and things like that. You noted that there's no deficit of a tree, and I think Brooke was saying that there was a deficit of a tree. So, I wanted to just get that clarified.
I think I was wrong.
Okay, so, because you're putting three on Dartmouth is, is the plan right now. I don't think that's going to cause any issues from like site zones or anything like that. So, I think that, that makes sense. I guess my only thought is, you know, it is a bummer to lose some trees along Broadway. You know, I would request that we can add something maybe along that western slope there, where there's three trees right now or four trees right now. You know, is there anything on that outside fence that maybe, again, helps shade from the residential development that's, or residential neighborhood that's right there? Would be the only thing that I request. Yes, Anna Koma.
Noah?
So, I know we had all of the, like, prior traffic data and everything related to, you know, the outside traffic. Is there data on the traffic within the drive-through? And like, what, you know, kind of, how much it currently stacks up and what kind of efficiency gains would be kind of gained from this? Because I, I recognize that this is a practice at a lot of Chick-fil-A's. And I've certainly been to Chick-fil-A's where they had this set up and they were very busy. I haven't particularly experienced it at this one. And so, I'm curious what the data is that shows that kind of stacking occurring currently.
Sure. Commissioner, so the traffic study that was provided the letter is for onsite circulation. The traffic onsite, what we're proposing is not increasing traffic, as Brooke had mentioned. And so, you know, the improvements are really just to reduce the stacking. So, inherently, there wouldn't be any increase to it. But it's, it would be what's shown in the, the traffic letter.
I have one last question for Brooke. Have there been, has there been any history of complaints about traffic on the site or other complaints in relation to?
I am not aware of any. And, you know, whether those would come to community development or whether they would go to another department, you know, sort of depends on if somebody was making a complaint, who they would go to. But I'm not aware of any.
Any complaints of code violations?
Ever. That's not to say there couldn't have been, but I'm not aware of any.
Michelle?
Just one more quick question out of curiosity. What percentage of your business do you do through the drive-through?
Commissioner, that would be a good question, one that I'm not sure if our operator would be able to answer. But he would probably be the one that has that, that number or something close to it.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant?
Can we just pause for one second? Because I'm trying to find the traffic letter that was referenced versus, yeah, okay, thank you.
Take a few minutes.
It's, it should be, it's, it's attachment number eight, but it should be after the long traffic study where you see all those pages. It should be right at the end of that and before the ALTA survey, which is a normal-looking survey-type drawing.
So, there's not actually any data provided. It's just the statement in this letter that it would improve efficiency.
Commissioner, so, the traffic, original traffic study done for the original Chick-fil-A was, for that proposal, what we're proposing here would not increase traffic is what the?
Right. I'm strictly talking about, from the perspective of, if we're going to approve taking away these trees and adding this vehicle lane and doing all of these things, I'm just curious what the, you know, just what the justification for that is? Or is it just to make this Chick-fil-A more like all the other Chick-fil-A's, even though it doesn't necessarily have the same amount of traffic? Or like, that, I was just curious if there was data to back that up?
There wouldn't be data necessarily for the amount of traffic coming through a standard Chick-fil-A. But when we look at these projects and we consider, you know, is a bypass lane necessary, then, you know, there's data to, to back up enough for us to come before you guys and go through this whole process, you know, year-long process. And, but?
Oh, I, I do have one more question about sort of, what were the reasons for the delay? Or, you know, when this came out?
Sure.
Were there interim, yeah?
Chairman, yeah. So, we've gone through, as Brooke had mentioned, two or three rounds of staff reviews of this, this site plan. And they've, this isn't a permit-level review necessarily, but we've gone through and mitigated a lot of concerns, made some changes to meet the city code, so that we can go forward and, and not have any concerns as we get into permitting and, and go through that process.
And Brooke, can you give me a thumbnail of what concerns were mitigated through that process?
We conveyed original concerns around, you know, the landscaping in the area between the building and, and the sidewalk on Broadway. And those, I think they were mitigated as, as well as they could be. Those were the main, there were some traffic comments about circulation initially. And, and those were addressed. So, and, and things, yeah, take time.
Yeah.
And it's, sometimes, it's, it's just an applicant and the projects they're working on and, and really getting back on it. Let's say they've received comments.
Were those concerns about internal circulation rectified by this report from Kim Lee Horn or by its material changes to the plan?
I think there were some original comments from our Public Works Traffic that were addressed by Kim Lee Horn and, and the, and the engineers for the applicant.
Chairman, I get an answer to that. Some of those questions were about these markings and one-way circulation. There were some conflict points between how this traffic comes around and, and? There were some conflict points between how this traffic comes around and, and the circle and merges at this point.
Other questions for the applicant? All right, then we move to public.
Chair, before you move on, do you want to check in with Steven?
Oh, I'm sorry, Steven. I'm sorry, Steven. Steven, questions?
I'm good, I've been listening.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for the reminder. All right, thank you. Do we vote to open public comment, or is it just part of the agenda? Okay. All right, at this time, we're going to hear from, this is the public hearing. We have one person signed up, Mr. William D.?
Day.
Day, thank you. And you have, Nancy, could you just give him the guidelines?
So, you'll have three minutes?
I have three minutes, okay. And do I have to hold it to talk, or just?
No.
If you could just state your name and your address for the record, and then I'll start your time.
All right. My name is William Day. I live on 202 East Dartmouth Avenue. And I also have some concerns about the removal of trees along Broadway. I don't feel like the additional trees on Dartmouth actually provide substantial changes to the landscaping. Those trees along Broadway do provide a nice amount of shade. I enjoy walking to Chick-fil-A, to Walk Spicy, to breakfast on Broadway. I'm sure other people use it to walk south along Broadway in the afternoon. And Chick-fil-A is already further set back than most of the other buildings there, and provides less shade just because of that. By removing three of those trees along Broadway, the ones on Dartmouth wouldn't actually, don't seem to actually provide any shade to anyone on, walking on Dartmouth, the sun will be to the south. They won't actually help pedestrians in any meaningful way. And I just, I find that I do enjoy using that stretch in the afternoon, specifically in the summer. Those trees are just now starting to actually provide shade. They are less than 10 years old. And I find that if we were to remove them, how long will it actually take for, what, two new trees to bolt out and get all of the shade coverage that the current four trees are just now starting to actually provide along there? If you look up and down Broadway, you can see basically further, south of there, that's the start of trees along Broadway, because to the north of it, there's the buildings directly up to the sidewalk that provide shade. And I, yeah, I feel like more needs to be done in order to increase comfort for pedestrians along Broadway. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. I appreciate your input. All right, anyone else not signed up that would care to speak? Yes, if you had come forward and follow the same procedure?
Hi, thank you for your time. My name's Daniel Andrews. I'm the owner-operator on-site. And address is 3085 South Broadway. I can answer some of the questions that were brought up. I've been operating this location since 2021, and very familiar with the site. So, our current drive-through percentage of sales is about 61% of the business goes through the drive-through. That looks like about 86 to 91 cars per hour on average. When it comes to the car-stacking data that you were referencing, if you look at changing the entrance lane into the drive-through into two lanes and widening the entrance, that alone will add a car stack of about five additional cars entering the site there. In my three years operating this location, I've had a handful of, of instances where the cars have backed up to the entrance on a coma. So, very rare. But this will allow us, as the business grows, to facilitate that capacity a little bit better. And so, when we think about it operationally, five additional cars there. The bypass lane along Broadway will allow us to execute and exit cars through the drive-through faster with employees outside that can deliver meals to the second car, so that the second car can pull out if the first car is waiting on food. Also, in reference to the landscaping below the mural, the murals are beautiful. And thank you for the feedback on the landscaping growing a little bit larger. I think we can do a better job to, to keep that lower and in shape, to make sure Inglewood looks beautiful, especially with that mural. So, I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. All right, anyone else to speak as part of the public hearing? All right, we close that portion of the meeting? Colin?
I think we have moved to close.
Did we move to close that?
If you, Tim, our city attorney can weigh in. But if you are done questioning the applicant and the staff, yes, we need a motion to close.
All right, so final call for commissioners that have questions of the applicant or the staff.
I have one more question.
David, go ahead.
All right, so to address our neighbor's comment about the trees and their concern there of lack of shade, is there any reason we couldn't add more of those junipers in that strip where we're proposing them at 15 feet on center? If they're that skinny? You know, I, I don't think we're losing much of a view of the side of the drive-through. Is there any reason we can't add more trees?
From a staff perspective, you know, right now, I, I scaled it out, and it's, they're about 15 feet on center. They're not going to get 15 feet wide. So presumably, you could put them closer together. You know, I think there's always, I, I don't think you'd ever want just a complete, you know, eight-foot-tall screen, because that can have some sort of security issues sometimes, of people hiding. I don't know what time Chick-fil-A closes, but, but I think you could add some. How much is too much? I, I couldn't quite say. But they're not going to be 15 feet wide.
And, and either Brooke or the applicant, these are the sort of those really tall, kind of pencil-skinny type of juniper trees?
Yeah, yes. That's, that's, to my knowledge, they are.
Chair, just a procedural item. After you hear from staff, then the applicant, and then you hear from support and opposition, you always give the applicant an opportunity to provide rebuttal?
Thank you, Brian. Yep. Anything yet you'd like to, yeah, to close the sale?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. To answer your question and the, the public question, as far as landscaping on the west side, it wouldn't necessarily make his point about shading. The, we can certainly assess, I'm not a landscape architect, but we can look at it and see if we can add a juniper or something more narrow to fit between that wall and the sidewalk perhaps. But we'll have to look at that and see.
And I guess, you know, the juniper doesn't seem like it's really going to provide much shade. I think it's more of an aesthetic kind of look. It looks like two of those three trees really aren't doing that great. There's really just the one in the middle that seems to really probably be providing the most benefit. Almost, is there a way to relocate that one tree at least to the north end in that strip that still doesn't have the, the wall? Kind of that northeast corner? Where I think Brooke was talking about adding a tree? I don't know if you're trying to put it right in there?
Commissioner, again, we changed, made some revisions to our landscape plans today, which we're not able to make into this presentation. That did include a tree, tree there. A two-and-a-half-inch caliper tree, golden rain tree. It's a deciduous tree. The, and which we can do, again, it would block that mural, as was stated previously, but...
I think the, the mural would be, be blocked by the ones in that area there. And you're not talking about putting it there, right? You're putting it in kind of that area in between the side, yeah.
I think it would also block the view from the northbound lane on Broadway.
I mean, I think it's, cars are driving south there, so no one's looking out of their car. And if you're walking in the sidewalk, you have, you know, 20 more feet to look at the mural. I, I'd rather see a tree than worry about blocking the mural. I've never even looked at the mural. And I live within like one minute of this location, pass her all the time.
Fair, fair.
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend anything in that north, north, north strip. But I, I feel like adding that tree that you've said you've added, and, and making that maybe a requirement would, would, I think, be beneficial in my mind.
You had mentioned that not all of your revisions have made it into this plan. What else are we missing here?
Commissioner, it was just landscape revisions, where we added the two trees that were recommended by staff. So, one here at the northeast corner, and then one over down here on the south end.
Okay.
And again, there is a tree that's existing right here still.
That tree won't go there, because there's four. One stays, one gets added on the south, and one gets added on the north.
Yep.
Along Broadway.
Our current revision as of today that is not in this presentation.
And then still three along Dartmouth?
Correct.
Other questions for the applicant? No. All right. Then I think we're at the point of closing public hearing. Can I get a motion?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the second.
It was me, second.
Oh, David, thank you. All right, Mr. Hagerty?
Yes.
Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Montiel?
Yes.
Mr. Ruddle?
Yes.
Ms. Hubka?
Yes.
Mr. Renson?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplan?
Yes.
And Chair Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, discussion.
Can I just, Tim, do we need a motion before they discuss?
No, as long as the public hearing is closed, then they can begin discussion immediately.
Thanks.
Colin?
Yeah, I mean, I think generally speaking, I recommend approval with the addition of the, the two trees that are being proposed along Broadway, and, and the additional trees along Dartmouth, I think satisfies what I think the neighborhood and I would like to see.
Let's, let's talk a minute about the mural and putting a tree on the northeast corner. Thoughts? Michelle?
Yeah, I, as I stated earlier, I would prefer, I, I hear the comments made by the resident that walks along Broadway. And I appreciate that, because there's a lot of people that walk along Broadway and didn't come. So, thank you for coming. And I understand your concern, but it still would be my preference to have that one tree in that sort of northeast corner, not the top-top northeast corner, but where we're talking about moved. My preference would be over Tacoma Street, but it, it really doesn't matter to me. But not be placed there, but to be placed elsewhere on the site to preserve that Inglewood. Because people driving northbound on Broadway, that tree regardless, it will be a stick in the middle of the, the vision of the, of the mural. So, that would be my preference. And I'd like to, at least the commissioners, to consider that that be part of our recommendation, to move that tree somewhere else on the site.
Brenda? I'm sorry, I thought you were reaching for the...
I'm thinking about it, but...
David?
I respectfully semi-agree, but I would just rather see it a little bit north of where that second driveline returns. I think that's far enough south from the mural, and I'd rather see an additional tree canopy. So, they can, you know, at five or 10 feet north of where you're removing that tree, seems like it could fit.
Colin? Yeah, are we, I, I think I'm saying that in that north bump out in between where the new wall is going to be and the sidewalk that crosses to the sidewalk at Broadway, I'm proposing there'd be two trees in there, is that? Because there, they said there was going to be one, and then adding one? Or are we talking about just putting one in there?
One there, and then one on the south.
On the south bump out? So, but were there, there will be two trees in the south, one because there's one existing, then we'll add one? So, a total of three trees along Broadway, one existing, two new in those two bump, or in those two?
No, I think they're removing all three of the existing trees. And we can't ask them now, because it's closed. But staff has recommended one in the north, where that sort of bump out is, where it's a single lane to exit the drive-through, and then one on the south corner is similar.
There's four trees along Broadway right now, and they're only removing three. I'm looking for... Yeah, that's the one insane, yeah. Then these three move.
Wait, which one's insane?
This.
Furthest one north?
This, furthest south.
That's him at south.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay. Okay. Anyone else? I'll talk about trees for a minute. Okay, let's hold that for a second. We can come up with our conditions or recommendations at the end. I would like to recommend a condition that I am concerned about that street post, or the lamppost in the sidewalk, that it is ADA access is either preserved or provided, you know, according to ADA standards along that sidewalk on Broadway. Brenda?
Well, my understanding is that sidewalk is not moving. It's going to stay as it is.
I know, it's not...
It shouldn't be a condition, because it's not a non-sequitur of the situation, right?
Well, moving that wall closer could impinge that, and I want to make sure that we're preserving ADA. Or if, if, if it's completely off their site, and it's in the public right-of-way, and there's an ability for the applicant to provide ADA access along that, I want that included. If it's not, if it doesn't already exist. So, preserve or provide ADA-compliant sidewalk along Broadway.
So, it sounds like what you're saying is if it's not three feet wide from the lamppost...
According to the plan, we don't know. Like, according to the plan, nothing's changing, but is it compliant now?
Sure.
We don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say the more realistic concern I would see is like if the plants just overgrow the sidewalk, and then it becomes, you know, a plant issue, but minor.
It, it is quite feasible that it is not currently compliant. And in looking at their site plan, if, if they can, you know, make an accommodation of adding some concrete there to make it compliant, I would like that to happen.
Well, I can agree that it's, the light pole's in an awkward space. It's kind of just in the middle of the sidewalk, if you will. Further north, not this one, the one on the corner?
No, not that one. That's a wide sidewalk there. It's where the sidewalk is near.
Oh, up here, okay.
But the solution to make it compliant would be on this site. So, there's, we can recommend conditions for them to make improvements off of their site. They're asking for a variance to a current PUD or current zoning. And so, it is well within reasonability to ask for something like that.
This was built in 2017, is that right?
No, earlier. Was it 2017?
Yeah. So, was ADA compliant then?
Yeah. So, when it was built in 2017, it had to be ADA compliant. If you look at the up and down Broadway, you'll see that at Broadway and Dartmouth, they have the, the ADA ramps.
Again, there's no guarantee that that was the case, because this is not on their site. This is in the public right-of-way. And again, we can require them to do things outside of their site if it's for the benefit of the situation, the neighborhood, the context. All I'm concerned about is not only the walkability, but the accessibility of that sidewalk. We are getting it closer, you know, the setback is not as great. I just want to ensure that people that need assistance, or in a wheelchair, whatever, can get down the sidewalk. Noah?
Yeah, if I can just, I, I think maybe the way to think about it is to step away from thinking about specifically, you know, is it currently ADA compliant? And more about the fact with the wall where it currently is, are people crossing into the planted area in order to pass that light pole, which is an obstruction on the sidewalk? And once the wall is moved closer, people won't be able to do that anymore. So, it may be that even if the sidewalk width is, you know, officially to the letter ADA compliant, that doesn't mean that someone with a, you know, wide motorized mobility chair could get through there. And if currently, they could roll over into the planted area, they won't be able to do that anymore. And so, I agree with Chair Martinez that we just need to make sure that the, you know, passability of that space is maintained when that wall moves up closer to the sidewalk.
And Mr. Bell did note that it is at least a one-foot setback behind the sidewalk. So, I feel like that could provide that and provide that space if they needed to add some additional concrete or something like that there. So, I, I have no objection to it. It seems reasonable.
Michelle?
Yeah, I, I don't think that anybody on the commission or in this room actually would disagree with, you know, making sure that people that are, have mobility issues could get out. you know, making sure that people that are have uh mobility issues uh could get up and down the um the sidewalk. Personally, though, um, because I come from in the world of commercial real estate, um, if there's an issue with that lamp post and it's in the public right of way, this is Inglewood's problem and I disagree with adding adding um issues to a a private property owner that would be necessi- would be actually the city of Inglewood's problem instead.
It looks like the property line is one foot into landscaping. I don't, I would ask, but it from what I can see, the property line is about one foot west of the edge of the sidewalk, so presumably the city could come in and pour a sidewalk wider if they wanted to. I agree with what you're saying. I'd like to put on the applicant because they're asking for a favor and I don't think it's a big favor to ask back, so I'm with you.
And it could be an entirely nothing situation if if the sidewalk is already compliant.
I just wanted to note that in the other PUDs that we've considered, in the four oh one Inglewood Parkway, there was, you know, the uh traffic improvements, which were two or three blocks up the street. The, you know, pinch points mid block crossing on Jason Street are a result of a PUD, which is a couple of blocks away from there. So I think what we were talking about in the public right of way is much uh more directly connected to this request compared to other times that applicants have been required to make uh or pay for changes uh in the public right of way.
Well, do you think, uh, the question is, do you think the possibility is though that if they have to make that ADA compliant, that they just simply remove the light posts?
I don't think they have the ability to do that or they could work with the city on some negotiated uh, you know, solution there.
But that may be the result.
It may be.
You know?
It may be. I mean, sidewalk or lamp post in the middle of sidewalks are terrible uh design to begin with and it should be resolved. Michelle, to your point, like um, I yeah, maybe it's the city's obligation, but it's also the landowner's obligation to follow the existing zoning, and so we're making a compromise here. You know, we're helping each other, so. Any, anything else? Any other considerations or uh conditions we would want to include in our recommendation or? No? Um, all right, then let's just um, let's circle back and kind of come to some consensus on the tree versus view plane of mural. How are we feeling?
I I would vote for having at least the one in that northeast corner quadrant.
Okay, that's one. Two. Michelle, I know you want to preserve the view of the mural. Eric, Noah, Brenda?
Keep the tree. I'm a I'm for a tree.
Pro tree.
I would keep it the way the city recommended.
Okay, uh, Stephen online, thoughts about the tree?
Yeah, I'll keep it the the way the city recommended.
Eric? Okay, you know, we'll get four months of view of of the mural.
My junipers are slow growers. They are, and it's not right up against the wall. It's.
This this tree would be a deciduous tree uh planted similar to what's there just in that northern part, yeah.
Do we need to talk about the one in the southeast corner? So one existing and then adding one, because that's not part of the current plan? Would be to add one into that corner.
Yeah, I think that's what staff has recommended.
Oh, do they? Okay, I thought they just had. Never mind.
Yeah. Um, I would like to say this, I would say, um, you know, adding a condition to um let's see, I have this written down here, um, to protect the view the view of the mural. So I am supportive of adding that tree on the northeast corner, but the landscaping on the north side of the lot, um, a requirement to just make sure that the the view of the mural is preserved, the landscaping is kept low and maintained um so that it doesn't get covered. Like that as a condition of of recommendation for approval.
Yeah, I I don't disagree. I will note, though, um, I think the plantings were in there before the mural was there. So it's it's kind of hard to really complain about the fact that they're, you know, somewhat blocking when they were there first, but they they've noted, they said they would maintain it a little better. Let's go with that.
I would like to put in our recommendation to council to preserve view of the mural in that northern landscape strip, whatever that means, so they can decide what that means. Um, and then the other condition, like I said, I'd like to um to include is um provision or preservation of ADA access along that sidewalk specifically around that lamp post um mid block. Eric?
Yeah, in regard to the the ADA, if I look at that light pole in the middle and then I head south and I look at the street light pole and in between there, we've got the artwork that you mentioned earlier. All of those items look to be in the same line, the artwork in the in the light and the uh stoplight pole look to be in the same line as the light pole.
Okay, so the light pole in the corner has a wider axis near the curb. And then it looks to me like that public art might be able to be adjusted. Planter, is it just a planter? It looks like there's like metal.
You guys will move the whole street.
I know. Yeah, so I just like, I mean, does anybody, like, like I said, I think provide or preserve, and this is our recommendation as a condition, is to provide or preserve ADA accessibility uh along uh the sidewalk on Broadway. I mean, anybody have something they'd like to tweak or change about even that simple language? Okay. All right, Eric, your mic's still on. You have anything else you want to? All right, um, that's a lot of words with the conditions. I can make the motion, I suppose. All right, I move uh for to recommend approval of this PUD amendment uh number Z O N twenty twenty four dash zero zero five um with the following conditions. Protect the view of the mural in the landscaping strip on the north side of the site. Preserve or provide ADA access along the sidewalk on Broadway. Um, and incorporate the landscape recommendations of staff that were not played. In a second.
I'll second the motion.
Can we get a vote?
Okay. Mr. Haggerty, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Austin?
Yes, especially for a company that provides the best lemonade ever in a fast food restaurant.
Mr. Montiel?
Yes.
Mr. Ruddle?
Yes.
Ms. Hubka?
Yes.
Mr. Renson?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplan?
Yes.
And Chair Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero.
All right, thank you everybody for participating this evening. Uh, thank you staff uh for a great presentation. Uh, we're going to move on to the next agenda item, staff's choice. Brian Brook?
Uh, I don't have anything.
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, thanks. All right, um, and then attorney's choice.
I I don't have anything of substance. I just wanted to thank you for letting me cover tonight. Deputy City Attorney Victoria McDermott is on a much deserved family trip, so uh you got the B team this evening.
Thank you very much.
Actually, if I might, um, we do have a very rousing discussion about state laws coming up in two weeks. Um, we're only going to focus on the ones that are going to require Code sixteen title amendment, Title sixteen code amendment, sorry. So that's only five of the eight. Five of these, yeah, five of the eight, sorry. Um, so be be prepared for that.
Um, and I I assume, Brian, that um some pre-reading of those materials would be advised?
What's that?
Some pre-reading of those materials.
Yeah, um, if you'd like, you can watch the city council study sessions. We can send that information along.
That would be great.
For those meetings that we had with council and then we'll get um pretty much the same materials that we gave to council to you all.
Great, thank you. All right, commissioner's choice, it's uh, let's start this tie this side this time. Actually, let's start with Stephen online. Items for discussion, Stephen?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thanks, Eric?
I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Colin?
All good, thanks.
Noah?
Uh, one week from today is the South Broadway Revitalization Walking Tour that I'm going to encourage everybody to attend, so four to seven PM centered at uh Western Sky Bar and Tap Room. Um, the purpose of this is to um kind of uh walk around with your neighbors and with city staff to take a look at the work um that has been done through the revitalization strategy groups, um, the vision for what this area of South Broadway can look like, um, and to get, uh, you know, input from the public. Um, so I encourage everybody to attend four to seven next Tuesday, August twelfth.
Thanks, Noah. I just have one thing and I I might have asked for this before. On these PUD packets, can we get them split into different uh PDFs where we don't have two hundred pages of um of traffic study? It's just, they're hard to download, they're hard to sort through, just if that's possible, I would love that.
I'm sorry, can you clarify?
The um, the packet um for the presentation this evening included the the application, the description, the site plan, the traffic studies, the ALTA survey and the um the slideshow. And it would just be, and I don't know if any other commissioners feel this way. If it's just me, then fine, don't change anything. But it's just hard to sort through all that when they're all in one PDF and they're two hundred and twenty pages um or more, sometimes a lot, a lot more. So I'm just asking to have those kind of broken up into different files.
I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you, thank you.
I have one.
Well, hey, Brenda, and then.
I'm I'm good. You go ahead then.
All right.
This might be the wrong place to ask about it, but um at South Centennial Park Pickleball Courts. Does anybody know what the procedure is? So there's been a company that's been holding tournaments there that charges an entry fee and reserving all six courts in the middle of the day on a Saturday. I've gone to play for fun and been told that I cannot because they've reserved all six courts charging money to play. And uh apparently there's not even a reward for the winner. Um, and so I'm mainly annoyed that I can't just go play. I don't want to play in a tournament for a whole afternoon. Does anybody know if a private company is allowed to book these things up for free and charge money?
Is that our site? Is Inglewood's site?
What is uh South Suburban outside Inglewood?
Yeah.
Damn. That's not what I wanted to hear, but.
That that sounds frustrating. Hopefully they are paying a fee to book those out. That's, I would.
Yeah, I think there's there's the tennis courts off floor, which are lovely. Uh, people are playing pickleball out there all the time. You should go check them out.
I have tennis courts right by my house, but the nets are a different height and there's no striping.
Pickleball is included in a couple of the Parks Bond uh updates that are coming.
Michelle?
I have nothing, thank you.
All right, and with that, we are at the end of our agenda. Thank you, everybody. Um, we'll see you in two weeks.